Welcome to the February 19th, 2024 City Council Meeting for South Haven, Michigan. This meeting is called to order. Tonight's invocation is from Pastor Aaron Cobb of the Spiritual Church of Christ in South Haven.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Father God, we ask your blessing upon this city. We ask you to bless it upon all that keep this city safe. I pray for the council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Hosley due to personal reasons?
I move to excuse Mary Hosley.
Second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Mary Hosley is excused. Next, we have a presentation and a county update from County Commissioner Gail Patterson-Gladney. Would you like to sit in a chair?
Oh, well, I have a chair.
Okay.
I hope I won't be here that long. But thank you. First of all, I apologize for not doing the county updates in the last few months. I had an accident, so I'm slowly recovering. But I'm glad to be here, and congratulations to all the newly elected and re-elected officials. Also, I just want to celebrate along with you for Black History Month, and so I'm glad what's going on today here. I wanted to mention a couple things that are going on in the counties quite a lot, but one of the things is that you have a great city manager who keeps up on so much of what's going on around the county and, of course, your city. I would like to encourage everyone in the county to go on our website, vanburencounty.gov, because you can see the news, you can look at the agendas for our meetings, you can also see what boards and commissions that are available for you to be a part of. And the county is run by your tax dollars and public's tax dollars, so it's good to keep up on what's going on. I know that you have a very efficient clerk, and so she probably has already given out the vote. You've already given those to...
I have my own version.
Oh, okay. But I can give some of these out to you. Okay, here's some more.
Oh, thank you.
I think also they sent out an electronic copy from Suzie Rome, the county clerk. This is a voter's guide, and it's for the 2024 elections. And the early voting has already started, as of Saturday. That's it? Okay. In the brochure, it talks about the three methods of voting. Voting method number one is absentee, number two is the early voting, and then number three is on Election Day. And the early voting, just in case people don't know about that, that's in Hartford. The county helped pay for the renovation of the Human Services West Building so that early voting could take place there. The clerks from all the different townships and cities are going to be there so that it will be one location. And so I have given this to your clerk and also to your city manager so that that would go out. Presidential primary, February 27th, and that will take place here. The primary election is August 6th, and the general election's November 5th. I have been on the Van Buren County Mental Health Board for over six years, and we just lost two of our members. So if anyone has a desire to be on the board, please get in touch with me, and then I can let Deb Hess, who is the CEO or the administrative assistant, know to give you a call, to let you know more details. We usually meet about six times a year, and it's in Paw Paw on Hazen Street, if you don't know where that is. So there's been two vacancies. We just recently... Well, exactly, I'm sorry, three vacancies. We just recently gave awards for distinguished service to three of our members, Sue Barnes, Tom Erdman, some of you know Tom from here, and Mike Mosley from here. So they've served for over 15 years on the board. And so we do have those vacancies. You can also see other board vacancies on our website. I just would like to give out my home phone number. I do have cards that I will give to your clerk for you later if you would like to get in touch with me. But my home number is 269-637-0862. I'm sure that many of you know about our great senior services program in South Haven, and you might have read about the Covert Center that has opened. I had a chance to go for a short visit there, and anyone who signed up for senior services here, you can also sign up to go there. It's a whole different atmosphere, smaller space, but they have some great counselors, and you can get help with different issues in their center. Also, they have a time for coffee and donuts and some fruit if you'd like to just go and see what things they offer. It's a good idea to reach out across different townships and cities, so I enjoy going there. The last item, the Van Buren Veterans Social. It's going to be taking place on the 29th, and I have the cards for the Veteran Service Officers and Director. So I'm sure you might already know all of them, but you can share that information. If you know any veterans, there's so many services that a lot of veterans don't know about, and please feel free to have your neighbors or anybody that you know contact the Veteran Service Officers to find out more about the great services that they have and also about this social. February 29th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it's at 226 East Michigan Avenue in Paw Paw. That's their new building, a remodeled building. And they're going to encourage the veterans to get together, to socialize, to share stories, and support each other. Do you have any questions for me?
I have one question. For the two vacancies for the mental health board, is that open to anybody who might be interested, or do they need to have some qualifications?
Well, they usually have community members, so if someone who's not qualified as far as having a specialty in mental health, they can apply.
Okay.
So as far as I know, you don't have to have a special, except for desire to help and find out more about the mental health board and what they do for our community.
Okay. Thank you.
One last thing, I think you probably have seen in the newspaper, about the $1.5 billion possible loan from the federal government to Holtech for the restarting, possible restarting of Palisades. As it stands now, we're still waiting, and the NRC, Nuclear Regulatory Commission, has to, of course, approve it because it has to be safe for our residents. But we discussed it at our last meeting, and I believe if they do get the loan, Holtech gets the loan, and everything goes through for safety with the NRC. The time that they would start up would be in 2025, possibly. The small modular nuclear reactors, I think they're looking at possibly two of those, they would be possibly online in 2030. So, okay.
Oh, I have a couple of questions. First, speaking of mental health, I was wondering what progress the county commissioners are making regarding helping with mental health, like mental health services?
Okay. We help support financially, we give to the Van Buren County Mental Health Department, the progress is great, and I would give you, what I would like to do is give you a report from the Mental Health Department, and maybe I could send it through Kate. Usually, we are above the different guidelines from SWMB, which is Southwest Michigan Mental Health Authority. We are usually above it, and it's all due to the Van Buren Community Mental Health staff and their energy and dedication. So we sort of oversee everything, but as far as the progress that the county is making, we can take advantage of the fact that they have been making progress in helping our teens, in helping with lower suicide attempts, et cetera. We do, one program that the county is looking at is around a $960,000 ARPA designation for youth. We had said a youth arts center, but it's a youth center now.
Oh, Luke's Light.
Working with Luke's Light, yes.
And does that have a South Haven satellite office?
We want to have an east side and a west side office, so it may be Paw Paw, and then we're looking at the west side. We've worked with Carrie Hagie from South Haven Center for the Arts, because that's the only arts center in our county. We're working with YDC, PAL, and all the different... First, we were trying to hire someone to help us develop the programs, not all the way developed, but we felt that during COVID, we saw that there was a greater need for mental health, help for our young people and everybody, but especially our teens. And so what we would like to do is offer free music lessons, free instruments to children, similar to Luke's Light. And maybe I can have someone from Luke's Light come in and talk to you all in the future. But we feel that developing skills that the children can use for the rest of their lives, music, art, even like crocheting, knitting, I know you have some people on your board, City Council, who have those skills, and being able to be creative, that helps so much for our young people. So as we develop it more, and we're working with the Van Buren ISD, the funds will go through them, and they will administer the funds and help with the hiring of the director. And so we're right at the beginning, but we do have the funds, so.
Recently, I heard there are 112 unhoused students in the South Haven Public Schools District, and I was wondering what the county commission is doing about expanding housing? Because if it's that bad in South Haven, it should be, I mean, there are probably unhoused students in every school district in our county.
Yes. And one of the things, as you may know, is that we're doing studies. We are working with the economic development teams for trying to do a study, and I think that they have contacted the city, each of the municipalities, to try to determine what the need is and where the housing market is going. And so I think that collaboration with the municipalities and the county, that's ongoing. I'm also on the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission, and they've done studies, too. So right now, we're still at the study phase, and we hope to get that information out to each of the cities. I would like to ask your city manager, have you been contacted?
I know that Lisa Ransler's handling is seeing that up. I'm not sure if she's reached out directly on that, because I know we've been in contact on a number of other things, but I can check with the team and see where we're at with that.
Oh, okay. Great, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I could try to bring back more information, too, for your on that housing. Yes. Did you have other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, Mr. Reiser and I are reading the proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month was established by the U.S. Congress in 1976, and?
Whereas this month is a time for honoring and celebrating Black history of our community and of our country, and recognizing that our city's diversity is one of our strengths, and?
Whereas Black History Month is an opportunity to honor the contributions made by our local Black leaders in organizations and in our municipality, and?
Whereas the city of South Haven is committed to striving for excellence and equality by increasing diversity and ending the marginalization of our Black residents and their voices, and?
Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mayor Annie Brown, proclaim and observe February 2024 as Black History Month. I encourage our residents to celebrate our diversity and inclusivity, thank our Black leaders, and ensure that in our city, all are welcome. And we'll take a photograph now with the proclamation. If you want to, if you can stand, and I'm gonna, other people are standing in front.
I will decline because of the six foot. Okay. Okay. Not out of respect, not disrespect.
Can I see you? Should we get over some more? Do you want to say cheese?
Cheese.
All right, thank you. And this will be in City Hall. Thank you.
I would like to thank the mayor and the city of South Haven for recognizing Black History Month and for the proclamation honoring Black History Month for 2024. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now it's time for the annual report from the South Haven Area Emergency Services Executive Director, Brandon Hints. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, City Council members, Mrs. Mayor, City Manager Hosier. Thank you very much for letting me stop by tonight and giving you all just a quick rundown on what our department was up to in 2023. Disclosure, I'm a very proud member of the department and what we do, so I'll attempt to throw that a little bit out of respect for your time, so. 2023 notable achievements, and I'm pretty sure you all have a copy, and then we also have copies for anybody on our website and our Facebook page as well, and I have additional that I'll leave out in the hallway. 2023 notable achievements, we were able to add additional career personnel. We did a staffing study early 2023 and realized that we were, between increased call volume over the years and our members' ability to adapt, we realized that we were just short on staff. So we presented it to our authority board, and we were given permission to add two additional career staff members, one which started late December. He completes his orientation next, or this week, actually. Our second additional career member began last Tuesday, or yeah, last Tuesday, and she will probably, I'd say, go on shift around late April, early May, something like that. So very fortunate to have them, very happy to have them. They're both experienced firefighter paramedics, one from Covert Township and one from Holland area. Our firefighter monument repair out in the island, it took 20-plus years of beating Michigan winters and sand. We were able to repair that with proceeds from our pancake breakfast and from donations from the public. We were honored by former South Haven City employee Ben Johnson, and he was also a past South Haven Fire Department firefighter, to pay respects at his services this past year. We had another record year, 2,679 calls for service. 1,115 of those calls occurred in South Haven City, 855 of those were EMS-related, the remainder fire. And as I'd mentioned in the past, the 240-plus fire calls that occurred in South Haven City weren't all necessarily structured fires or car fires, thankfully. If that was the case, we wouldn't need any additional training. But those encompass a lot of different things, assist to the disabled elderly residents, carbon monoxide checks, carbon monoxide detector checks, gas leaks, extrications, rescues, things like that. And Mayor Brown joined our authority board as our newest board member after Mayor Scott Smith stepped down. And many, many thanks to Tom Renner. I know he does a lot of work all around town with his pitchers, but all of these pitchers in this report are from him, and he's been, I can't thank him enough for his pitchers, his continued commitment to Shays', and I'm very, very lucky to have him. This past year, our 2023 Firefighter of the Year was Zachary Kenrich. He's been a member of our department for probably close to 10 years by now, came on to Shays' as a paid-on-call member and was promoted to a full-time position probably about seven years ago. And our 2023 Leadership Award recipient was Philip Quinn, one of our paid-on-call members, very active, very well-respected. Our annual report, I won't bore you with too many numbers regarding the budget or personnel information, but as I'd stated earlier, we did have 1,115 calls in the city this last year, actually for less than we had in 2022, so we're doing something right. Our response time this past year in the city was four minutes and five seconds overall, four minutes, 4 minutes, 29 seconds for fire, 3 minutes, 41 seconds for EMS. Ambulance is a little bit quicker, so we can get there a little bit faster. And as a reminder, these are the times that are determined from Shays' time of dispatch, not when the call was received. Our overall response time for our entire area, 97 square miles, was 5 minutes and 52 seconds. And I have to give a lot of credit, all of the credit, to our off-duty career and paid-on-call members. We often get what we call a double tap, sometimes a triple tap, sometimes we had a quintuple tap this last year. They're all coming in on their days off to make sure those calls are covered. And we have a regular call-in for our off-duty members to come in and cover. When they get called out again, then another call seems to occur, just for whatever reason, but these response times wouldn't be what they were if they weren't. And a lot of that is because all of our members, not all of our members, but a majority of our members do work, play, and live here. We transported 941 advanced life support patients this last year, 429 basic life support patients, and had 385 no transports. An advanced life support patient would, criteria would fall under IV access, drug administration, or medication administration, I should say, cardiac monitoring, sometimes all of the above. And a basic transport pretty much is what it sounds, basic adjuncts were all that were needed. And a no transport is when we are dispatched for medical response, but the patient denied transport that wasn't necessary by ambulance, or felt it wasn't necessary by ambulance. That's one of the things I'm very proud of that sets us apart as a service. If we respond to your home and you need a hand and not an ambulance, you're not going to receive a bill for it. We don't do that. We do have policies in place that do address it if it becomes an abused, if it becomes abused, but 99% of the time, that can be remedied with just a simple conversation. One thing is, you probably all know, I like fun facts, I like numbers. One thing I like to mention when visiting other agencies, other areas, departments, we often get asked about how our authority works, how we distribute, you know, our contributions between the townships, the city, things like that, and how we can get the most bang for the taxpayers' buck. Authorities aren't new in the South Haven area, Shays', Shawza', Sharah', our mail gets mixed up all the time, but there's a reason for that, because of the authorities' work. What I like to highlight when visiting other areas, and I use South Haven City and Shays' as an excellent example, is current numbers to staff, one ALS ambulance, which would be, with most EMS agencies, one paramedic and one basic. One ambulance's current numbers would be $850,000 per year annually. That doesn't have a dedicated backup ambulance, that doesn't have a fire department, that doesn't have a lot of the things that we do provide. And fun fact, that's pretty close to what South Haven City currently contributes for, 14 career personnel, 30 paid-on-call, 12 apparatus, four support vehicles, and a really good response time. So alarm time, day of the week, this last year, 3 to 11 continues to be our busiest time of day. 7 to 3 is creeping up on that pretty quickly, and our nighttime response is still, we average, our crews are usually up once a night, sometimes twice a night. And something else to take in consideration with that, our average call is about an hour, sometimes three, four, five, sometimes half an hour. But as they respond to a call, get back to the station, there's still reports to get caught up, things to get cleaned up and such, so not a lot of sleepful nights anymore. And Thursdays edged out Wednesdays as the busiest day of the week in 2023. Don't know why, it seems like the Fridays and Saturdays would kind of edge everybody out, but. South Haven City, we were able to boast a very low $5,500 fire loss this last year, so let's keep that up. And another very proud point of our membership is all the extras that everybody performs. I don't know how they squeeze them in anymore with our increased call volume. One of the most important things that we focus on is keeping the station clean and orderly, and our equipment clean and orderly. Our taxpayers pay for it, we want to showcase it. We perform a majority of our own vehicle maintenance, very roughly, yes, I would be pretty safe to say that probably saves about $200,000 to $300,000 annually, and building maintenance around the station as well. And in-house trainings. If we had to send everybody out for trainings with the new firefighter continuing education requirements and our EMS education requirements, that would be a pretty hefty bill. So thankfully, we have, I want to say probably 12 to 15 certified instructors on the department, so we were able to keep all that in-house and save money as well. Alarms by month, August remains our busiest month for obvious reasons. Our seasonal increase, of course, is at least double of the normal population that we serve. And inspections have remained at the forefront. The numbers show it. Our fire calls are going down every year, and the inspections that we perform, the site plans, the pre-plans, the commercial building inspections that we do regularly, we've had a couple near misses that we could actually put a... We've had a couple near misses that we could actually put a number on over the past few years. And it's, they're doing kind of the behind the scenes work that's keeping us all safe. Our honor guard is showcased in the report as it usually is. We have the best. I hate to sound boastful or arrogant, but they really look sharp in every event that we go to. I'm very, very proud of what they do. And the community we serve is very important to us, of course. We've received so much support from local businesses, local organizations, our taxpayers, city council members, our board members, our township board members. The longer I've been in this position, the more I learn, the more I hear, the more I see people thank us, you know, thank us for our service. But we, we, we thank all of our communities that we serve because pretty great. Like I said, probably biased, but because the majority of us live, work and play here. And our pancake breakfasts are a good example of, of how much our residents and visitors support us. I see a lot of friendly faces and a lot of faces, a lot of these in this room right now that come through and help. So we're 28 years in and I'm very proud of our organization, I'm very proud of what we do and very happy to be able to be here tonight and brag upon it a little bit. So can I answer any questions?
Go ahead. Well, first of all, thank you for everything that you all do. I know you're busy every day and we appreciate you. I read an article a couple of days ago about the helicopter medical transport in the area closing down. Do you know if that will impact how you guys respond to calls and transport?
For, for the, for the most part, we would request air care for a, an on scene transport if we had a traumatic injury that had an extended extrication time where we couldn't get that person. If, if Eric, if we had time for air care to get dispatched, land and stabilize the patient by the time they got there so they could hurry them off to a bigger regional hospital than we would. Our on scene requests haven't been as much lately, thankfully, but there are still other options. There's an aeromed service out of Grand Rapids area, and there's also a med flight service out of South Bend. I've been told in the air, they're pretty comparable response wise, but it's, it's a loss. We've, we've had a very good relationship with air care over the years. We've known quite a few people that have worked there and one of our members actually went to work there. So it is a loss and I, I don't like to see it happen, but I don't think it'll impact us a lot. Yeah, it'd be nice to, it'd be nice if they were still there, but we do have other options. So fortunate to have that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
A second. Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Now it's time for public comment for items on the agenda excluding any item scheduled for public hearing. You have up to five minutes.
Yes, I'll be leadoff. First, I'd like to thank the city council.
Oh, your, your name.
I am Bob Metzen, 130 Van Buren Street. So I'd like to thank the city council for indulging me with the emails I've sent over the last couple of weeks and the fax checking and some of you I've met with in person. But for those of you who don't know where 130 is, I am in the heart of the busiest STR district, I guess, from statistically, from what I hear. And I'm surrounded by STR people, some that have a pool and some that allow dogs. So what I'm here to do tonight is I want to talk to you about retaining the current ordinance as it stands, the one to four ratio. And if you're going to deviate from that, I hope you have a good plan and there's a few reasons why. I've been told that the, if you look at the calculation for the, the one to four, the numerator at the top is probably the most important today. And if you look at that, this city has mostly been built up from what I hear. So there's not a lot of room for additional additions. And you say, okay, that may not be true, but I looked at the data over the last four years and there's been a net increase of 60 homes that could be available to be STRs. So you have 60, there's a 20% cap versus the one to four. So that means over four years, you have 12 new homes, which is only three a year. So I think ultimately this ordinance has done its job in terms of capping, you know, what might be a reasonable amount of STRs. In fact, if you look at the report that was generated at the last meeting, there's 58 requests for 27 open spots. Now I know some of you, and I've heard this in the community, say, well, that's too many as it is. Well, that may be my opinion, but there's some certain things I'd like you to, to consider as if you'd move off of that. The city does have a good job base in terms of industry, healthcare, education. But 30 years ago, this town lost 300 to 400 jobs between 2000 and 2015, 300 families moved. Today, the workers in this city, the people that reside here and still work, 40% of them drive over 30 minutes to get to work. The other 30%, there's another 30% that have to drive 30 minutes. So they're driving a long way. Ultimately, what that's telling me is that we have too many houses for the jobs that are available. Now I travel a lot in my business and unfortunately I've been to towns where this has happened. I sent all of you an example of that. And for those of you out in TV land and in the audience, I would ask you to search and look up Alakwipa, life after the closure of Big Steel. The one benefit that this town has that they didn't have is they have the amenities of Lake Michigan. So what does that mean? So instead of leaving homes empty, you found other buyers for them. So we, in 2000 and 2015, when home prices were increasing nationally at 100% or close to that, you had people coming in and investing in your community, maintaining and keeping up the homes, but also fixing them up. I can tell you as a buyer, almost every one of the homes in my area needed plumbing, electrical, structural fixes. A lot of them, I can tell you they're homes that didn't even have city hookups to sewer. So I have five kids and I can tell you only one out of the five was a home fixer-upper. So you had to find a special buyer to come in and do that. So that's happened, which has been great for the city. And what that has manifested itself in, if you look at the records in this, your annual report has a lot of detailed information if you want to go past page 100. But between 2013 and 2022, the taxes as value of residences in this city went up 45% and the tax collected by the city on property taxes went up 33%. At the same time, the millage you charge over that 10 years went up less than 1%. The persons here that did not redo their homes or have to pay increased assessments for doing their homes paid 1.8% and, you know, increased annual. So maybe that had to do with the Hadley, Hadley amendment, but regardless, it was a low number. But when you look, take that all into consideration, the city is now collecting, and it wasn't just once, it's an extra million dollars a year because of the investment people made in those homes. So keep that in mind. Similar to that, you also have the, the 18 mil school tax. And again, that's just paid by second homers and STRs. So if you have 500 STRs, I took a look at the change when I homesteaded and it has the effect of close to $2 million going to Confers because of the STR folks. The city last year commissioned a study by Ruby Analytics, which showed that between 11 and 12 billion in personal income was generated from STR business in the city. As the council knows, most of you don't know, I've tried to verify more of this and.
Your time is up.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Just have a good plan, please.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. Before my time starts, do we have to have a point of order since Mary Hosley came in or how does that, because you already excused her, I just asked him the questions.
We can do that.
It'll be noted in the minutes.
Okay. I just want to make sure she's legal. Okay. First of all, I see on the consent agreement thing that we have our veterans fishing trip in there. So we've already started preparing for that for this year and the veterans, we have more fun and it's my honor to take those guys out and they have a lot of fun. Even if we don't catch fish, we have a great time. We have a dinner over at the moose when it's over and the parade. All the people coming out to, for the parade is just unbelievable. You've, you've probably been to it. I want to talk about the houseboat ordinance real quick. I didn't get a chance to look at the whole thing, but there, there's some problems, I think, with pump out in there. There's, there's no information about what happens to these houseboats. How often do they have to be pumped out? If you, if you rent them out every week and it has seven or eight people in there, how often do you have to pump those out? They can't connect to the sewage because they're lower than, you know, than, than the ground. So, so it has to be a pump out system, just like a regular boat would be when they go get to the fuel dock at Gull Lake or the yacht club, they just, they pump out whatever, however they have to do that. Also, if they use these in the winter time, there's no requirement for bubblers. If you don't have a bubbler on that hull, the hull's going to crack from the ice and it could cause your holding tank for your sewage and your gray water to burst. And then what, then you've got a problem. Okay? So there's nothing in the ordinance about that. And, and there's many other things, I think Mary has mentioned a lot of them. And I think it's lacking, but take a look at it and see what you think. Now STRs, Bob makes some good points, but just like the Hadley Act, there's a 5% cap on your income tax every year, your homeowners tax every year. Okay? We need to, to reduce the number of STRs. There's 783 per the report. There's, there's at least 100, minimum 100 that are illegal, if you want to look at statistics. And we need, we need a cap. Like I indicated to you, I gave you the information from the summary of the survey we took two or three years ago of 566 residents, not people that own STRs, who a lot of them, most of them are from out of town, but residents. They want reform. They want a cap. I think the consensus of the council was when, when Kate was asking December, get your idea, there's, there was pretty much consent that we need a cap. We need a cap on business ones and we need, after, I hope this gets approved, I think it should be unanimous because the residents want this, this vote to be affirmed, but we have to address personal STRs. Like I said many times, that's your loophole. If I don't get an STR permit and I'm not in the 57, doesn't matter. I can just go get a personal STR. And, and I'm going to, I'm going to treat it exactly like a business STR because I know I'm not going to get caught. I've seen many instances. Now they have written some citations for that, but in, in the long run, almost all of them don't get caught for the six rental segments or 28 days. So after you approve this moratorium, we need to rewrite both all the ordinances, the code of ordinance and the city ordinances. So it's fair to everybody, set a cap and we've got to reduce the cap. You've got to remember, we have 800 STRs. You'd have to add up St. Joe, Holland, Grand Rapids, Grand Haven, and you might get to what we have in South Haven. There's too many STRs. Thank you.
Aaron Cobb, 914 Center Street. And I'm here to speak about the STR. I've been trying to get a business permit for my STR and you're talking about putting a cap on them. But I am in a BR business residential. I have a store and part of the store I turned into a, in a short term realm. And I should, I seem sure I should be exempt from the residential part of that because I am in a business. I'm, I'm not in the residential part. And you're talking about diversity and inclusion. You should, I don't want to trick no different way. Think about me, think about diversity and inclusion and STR. I've been trying to get your STR. And I'm just going to say this, you're talking about if you do away with all the STRs tonight, who's going to rent some houses? You're going to have a town sitting here with full of empty houses because you're talking about, you know, affordable houses. I'm all for affordable houses. As I said, when I moved here in 1968, it's 12 factories enclosed in the area. And when I came here, my house wasn't even built. I got a job, they built developers come in and build home and we had to buy the home. Now, until you bring the factories back, no developer, no private developer coming in build no home. Because the reason I say this, my doctor, I'm going to say this in Calibas, Dr. Dallas, someone you might know then, is a building on the corner of Michigan Avenue and Calibas Street, he was going to buy it. And it's four or five tenants live there and he done a survey. They all work at their like restaurants and stuff like that. And he refused to buy the building because he said, if he had bought the building, they would have to move out because the money he had to put in it, they couldn't afford to live there. And I've been in the rental business for years. I own a building and I have four tenants in there. If I sold that building tonight, tomorrow, and I guarantee them tenants would have to move because the developers that buy that building, they're going to fix that building up and some tenants might would have to move out. And I'm, the highest rate I get there, two bedroom is 725 because I bought it 30 years ago and I could afford, still afford to do that further. So I think you're talking about the STR. I've been in the store for 28 years down on that corner. City haven't done anything for me. I haven't asked the city to do anything for me. I know they helped downtown and all that. All I ask now is just move out of my way, let me do a little something to help me and my wife so we can kind of sit back and relax and make a little money. Because the stores downtown make their money off the tourists that come here, people that are retired, come here with a lot of money. And that's all we try to do, make a little of that money during the summer without STR. That's all. Thank you.
Pamela Chapel, 565 Monroe Boulevard. I just want to say that I'm very much in favor of the moratorium on business STRs because this little town has way too many STRs. It's just way out of balance. And I know we've discussed this forever, but we need to make a step, a definite step in the right direction and, and I believe this is one good step. Thanks.
Jack Fitzher, 24 and a half Grand Boulevard. I'm interested tonight in the floating homes, the boats. I'm not as interested or concerned about the pump out systems because I see, having been in the harbors for 35 years or so, that there are businesses that provide pump outs to these units, be they power boats, wherever, whatever, it makes no difference. You can regulate the amount of times that they're pumped out, I guess. I don't know how you could do that, but the fact of the matter is, is the DNR would look really closely at a problem if they were to abuse that. And besides that, the renters wouldn't be there very long either when the holding tanks are full. But that's really not what I consider to be a problem. I'm more concerned about the municipal marinas and the effects of floating homes. I received a call the other day and I'm not a NIMBY, you know, not in my backyard. That's not usually my style, but I'm a little concerned about it. You have some empty slips there and a gentleman called me, a fellow that I've, has had a boat in the marina over the years. And he said, Jack, I have a friend who has been offered a slip in your marina, which is the maritime marina. He said, there is a houseboat there and he's very concerned about it, that it's a party boat and that he won't be able to get a sleep on the weekends or whatever. There is a little houseboat there. It's not a party boat though, it just happens to look like one. It has some drawings on it and it'll slide off the back and it never moves. But the fact is the folks that own it don't abuse the situation. But you can see the possibility with that, with keeping other people away if in fact you begin using the municipal marinas. using the municipal marinas as a place to put these kinds of floating STRs. Again, personally, I don't have a problem with it in the private marinas, where the slips are owned by individuals. Those folks really set the rules within their condominiums, their dockaminiums. But in the municipal, in the municipal marinas, you set the rules. And if you allow that kind of use for the marina, it changes the atmosphere. And that's what I'm mostly concerned about, that that atmosphere now of what is traditional boating, sailing, powerboating, people who are there for recreational reasons, not necessarily to make money, but rather to spend money in copious amounts on their desired hobby. So I just ask that when you think about this, really think about controlling the ordinance so that it doesn't impact the municipal, the municipal marinas. That's really my biggest concern. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Carrie Weber. I'm here for the STR. Unfortunately, I'm one of the 58 families that are affected by this, possibly holding these permits. And I know I've heard all the things, that there was something that went around, that everyone signed and didn't want this. But I want you to think of a couple of things. Our family bought a house, we renovated it so that our family could come, and we've been using it for our family. We've been following all the rules. We don't want to not follow the rules. And we already have a personal permit, so you're not going to decrease the number of short-term rentals by not allowing us to rent it two more weeks or a few more weeks so that we can keep the house. Our house unfortunately had a lot of structural problems, no sewer line, and all kinds of things that we didn't know about when we got the house. We also had to refinance it at the worst possible time for financing and rates, and it's a financial burden. And if we could rent it even two more weeks a year, we wouldn't have to worry about it. I'm sorry, I'm emotional. We've been dealing with the back and forth, and I've heard everyone say, there's no possible benefits for STRs. But I want you to think of some of these things that me and my friends have done in the last couple of years. We've volunteered to the schools, the festivals, and the churches. We've spent several thousands of dollars, actually, in the last few months. We've raised over $10,000 for local people in need for essentials. We've done backpack program donations, we've done school donations, a $5,000 scholarship, animal rescue. We've given work to plumbers, electricians, framers, drywallers, housekeepers, maintenance men's, and other people, and that's just my house. Temporary housing and accommodations provided to local families for free. I've personally, and some of my friends, have given free housing to people that were in between housing, and also had, that had family emergencies and needed places to stay. We've done donations to the community, like the outdoor fireplace and festivals. We give people an opportunity to work local. I have people that work for me that cannot take care of their families if they have to drive a half hour to work. I allow flexibility in asking them to do that, plus the hundreds of thousands of dollars we've paid to restaurants, building materials, insurance, car repairs, and helping our neighbors with their homes. I just want you to know, this is just not just a number. It's not going to decrease the number of STRs by taking people that already have personal permits and not giving them a business permit. It's probably not even going to increase the amount of people that are coming to South Haven. If 1,000 people come to South Haven and you have three more houses, it doesn't mean 1,003 people are going to come. So it might actually even lessen the experience on some of the people that have been renting over and over and over again, to transfer the people out to other homes. Just something to think about. Please consider not passing this.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Hi, my name is Todd Heinrich. I live at 357 Moore Court, a couple hundred yards over that way. Susan and I have lived in the South Haven area for 35 years. She's been a practicing physician here. She's been trying, as Dick Allen and David Lisko before her, to try to get new nurses, doctors, providers, to move here, and they won't. They look at our real estate market and just, they won't move here. Talked to former mayor Scott Smith, ask him if he's gotten an employee to move here in years, and the answer is no. I'm here to talk to you about the costs of neighborhood STRs. There are costs that we can easily measure. Every home that becomes an STR reduces housing in South Haven. Reduced housing supply means increased housing costs, simple supply and demand, which means fewer residents, lower school enrollments, and fewer local business owners and employees. That's directly from your moratorium language. What does that mean in dollars? The most recent professional study commissioned by the city reports average household income in the city at $83,000 per year. That's per household. Multiply that by the 497 homes, 497 families, and that equals $41 million in lost income every year. Because of the loss of homes in South Haven to STRs, it's much less likely that a teacher or a nurse or a mechanic or a doctor or a physical therapist or a car salesman or an engineer or an accountant will move to the city of South Haven. Those are just a few of the many easily measurable costs of neighborhood STRs. Annie, a few months ago, you sat in our home and told me the biggest cost. You asked me, and my light bulb went off after you walked out the door. You asked why so many residents were so unhappy about neighborhood short-term rentals. That is the biggest cost to South Haven's community and economy. The biggest costs are not the easily measurable numbers I just referenced. Unhappy residents and reduced opportunity for new residents are the highest costs. It is difficult to measure unhappiness or loss of peace or job prospects. How does a small community measure the loss of young people? For over a decade, concerned citizen, city residents have been coming to this podium and writing letters and signing initiatives and asking the city council to reduce the number and density of business short-term rentals in their neighborhoods. When those requests began, we probably had 125 to 150 short-term rentals in our neighborhoods. Now we have almost 500. Because of the resident, because of this, residents don't think that your predecessors were listening very well. Concerned residents became unhappy residents. Hundreds of them put signs in their front yards to get city council's attention. That didn't work either. Unhappiness with the city regarding short-term rentals motivated over 400 voters to sign the STR initiative to simply take it off of your plate and put it on a ballot. The city dismissed that request. You have a chance tonight to begin to give neighborhood residents hope for a more prosperous and peaceful South Haven. Please vote for the moratorium.
Thank you.
Trevor Brooks, 559 Phoenix Street. You can add my, in concern with whatever the topic is, the, my biggest reason why I'm coming up today is to make sure that, keep the anger and the confusion outside of this assembly as to the minimum as possible. And my understanding of the rules of order is Mary's been excused, so her vote does not count tonight, unless the assembly agrees to it, makes a special motion or something. And I just, that's my understanding, so I just want to bring that up, to hopefully that's not something that gets crazy in the future. Thank you.
Good evening. Mary Lynn Boogie, 70 Gabriel Drive. I'm pleased that you have the moratorium on the non-exempt business rentals on the current agenda, and I hope you will adopt that tonight. Additionally, however, we need a moratorium on personal short-term rentals. At the current time, there is, my concern about that is that personal permits, in some cases are abused, and the rules, as are written in the ordinance, are difficult to enforce, which is why they're abused. Currently, some of them are, although they're taken as a personal, they are not, they are used as a business. And my concern is that if you don't cap them at the same time as you cap the business ones, people will use them as a way to circumvent not being able to attend, to get a permit, either because they're not, the moratorium is on, or because they're over the limit. And therefore, if you don't cap the short, the personal ones also, you're going to just have people circumventing and unfortunately doing things that are actually illegal, but are very difficult to enforce. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Gaston, 97 Superior Street. I also support the moratorium. I think it gives breathing room for maybe everyone to ponder the situation we have. Maybe in the end, it will keep what we have, I don't know. But it would be nice to have some breathing room for everyone to look at the whole thing. I sent you all a thing today about the personal, personal short-term rentals. To me, it's just, as I pointed out, it's a bad ordinance. You have an ordinance that literally you cannot monitor or enforce. It is silly, and you're forcing people to cheat. So I would, I support the moratorium. I know that, pretty much, I've seen all of you at one time or another voice concern. Past people, the people that have been here for a while, I've heard people say, gee, I kind of wish they weren't in it, I wish we'd never gotten into this. I've seen people support at least a better discussion than what we have right now. And I would welcome that. So I support the moratorium. And I've said all, I don't think having this amount of short-term rentals will sustain a community over the long haul. If you want to have Rotary and Kiwanis and churches and clubs and, you need real residents for those things. And people, people won't, won't live here, won't live here and support those groups if, if, if all their neighbors are come and go every week. I would say the other thing, last thing I'd have to say, people always go, well, it's always been a tourist town, it's always been, we're just a tourist town, that's where we are, a tourist town. You know, we used to be a tourist town, and it was kind of in one neighborhood. My neighborhood was the residential part. That was the residential part, then we had kind of the tourist part. Now, my neighborhood is the most tourist part. My neighborhood, where it was always single-family residential, is now the most tourist part of the entire short-term rental map. There's something wrong with that. There's something wrong with that.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Chelsea McKeever, 327 Edgell is my address. I want to start off by saying I'm sorry if I come off a little abrasive, as I am naturally an abrasive person. But it really strikes a fire under my belly a little bit when I have someone come up here crying because they have to rent their home two extra weeks in order to sustain their first-world lifestyle, when I have a disabled mother who is incurring $200 of fees and fines to the city because she's not able to go and get her garbage can to the, from the road in a timely manner. For every person that you see come up here and cry about their short-term rental not being rented, there's probably another five people out there that are crying because they had to move their children to a different school district, because they can't afford to live in a city that they want to work in. So unfortunately, I'm sorry for Ms. Carrie that came up here and shared her experience, and it's great that she's volunteering, it's great that they're doing things for the community, but that doesn't provide a place for locals to live and sustain a life and a family in South Haven. I'm 30 years old this year, and I went from seeing countless of my classmates and peers leave this town because they simply cannot afford to live here. I currently live in my mother's basement because I cannot afford to provide my family that I would need a three or four-room home in South Haven. You know, it's, it's just, the conversation is being had again and again. And like the lady who came up here before me and said, the residential neighborhoods used to be that, they used to be residential neighborhoods, and we had like the touristy area of South Haven, and that's changing. I live in what used to be looked at back in the early 2000s as the most unfavorable area to live in, in South Haven. And when I stand on my porch at 327 Edgell, and I can look out and see Ms. Wilkins' house, but I can also look out and see five short-term rentals that have taken over our neighborhood in the short amount of time that they have. So I'm just here to say that, as a local, I definitely support the moratorium, and I hope that this discussion can continue to be had, because I think it's a very important discussion to be had.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Connie Metzen, and I live at 130 Van Buren. I just have a few questions. I don't know who can answer them, but when I look at the 500 short-term rentals that we have, if we get rid of them, who's buying these homes? Who's going to be able to afford these homes? Who's going to be able to move here and raise their families without jobs? We have no jobs here. We don't have businesses that can support the people that want to buy these homes. They're beautiful homes. We're giving other people an option to enjoy, yes, our beach town. They're supporting us, they're supporting our schools. We have never, we're surrounded by short-term renters, we have never had a problem with them. In fact, some of them have became friends of ours. We enjoy them bringing their grandchildren, going to the park, seeing our beaches full of people having fun. I don't see bachelor parties, I don't see people walking around the streets drunk. I see families getting together in a beautiful community, close to Chicago, where they can afford to bring their families. I see people that are buying these decrepit old homes that have been sitting for years and fixing them up and beautifying our communities. No, they're not here all the time. Yes, they are making money, but you also have to remember too, the people that live here year-round, there are some that are renting out their homes so they can afford to live here, so they can pay their taxes. It just confuses me that people want to stop the short-term rentals when that's what's keeping us alive. And, you know, it's just my opinion, I don't rent, I live here, I love this town, but I guess, and I'm just so disappointed in the, in this separation that we have formed in this one topic. And it's heartbreaking that you can't talk to some people, that you can't communicate with some people, because they're so separated. If we could just all get together and say, hey, how are we going to fix this? What can we do to kind of manage it where all of us can work together to make this an even better town? I love South Haven, and I'm sure everyone here would stand up and say the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Anthony LaFredo, I'm at 348 Baseline. Fun topic, STR. I just wanted to add, you know, get us another perspective on looking at, you know, focused on the houses and, you know, the business, not business, certain neighborhoods. You know, I overall own and manage eight, nine different companies, I should know that. But, long story short, during the summer, we typically ballooned about 77 employees. You know, just hearing a lot of these conversations, I realize we're not talking about getting rid of them altogether, but every business I have, we do home improvements, we do service tourists, I am in the vacation rental business, I own some properties, et cetera. But I'd be terrified that I'd have to fire a lot of people that live here, work here, spend money. You know, it's already a challenge with the seasonal aspect of this town. When I first got here, I think I had five employees, and fortunate enough that enough people want to come to this town, temporarily leave some money behind so we can all enjoy it. But again, just one area to look at, me personally, I might have to cut my team in half, and each person that I have- that I hire has kids, goes to the schools here, et cetera, et cetera. One other thing, and maybe I look at this the wrong way. My personal residence is, again, 348 Baseline. You're just talking with realtors, you know, one reason why I have a fair amount of equity in my home is people coming in to improve their neighborhoods, et cetera. You know, I worry that I potentially would lose, I don't know how much money, but that's money that I would have for my kids' college funds, et cetera. Doesn't mean I'll lose it all, but we kind of cut down who would buy our home if we had to leave, or leave a home just kind of sitting there. So again, major effects from, from things like that. Lastly, sure, a lot of people here, you know, we all hear the stories, but I happen to be in a neighborhood that has sold 60 homes in the last couple of years. I think the last I kind of looked at, about 32 of them are rental properties. And when I talk to people, I just like to find out, you know, hey, why are you here? What brought you here? Because I kind of often look, how the hell did I get here? Majority of these people are renting their homes so they can retire here. That obviously is not, people that do live here, maybe they do or don't like that. It sounds like in the 12 years I've been here, majority, or maybe half this town, that's how they got here, visited it, liked it. I ran out to a lot of people. I mean, time and time again, they're all families. They come here sometimes twice a summer, every summer for sure. I mean, they're looking to find their place for the next year when they leave. And though they're not locals, I mean, they do, you know, have a sense of the town, they help us take care of. And all the clients that I have that do, are in the rentals, I mean, they keep their homes in the best shape possible. I also deal with some locals where obviously we're all a little different, but, you know, some people, they might skip one thing, maybe they can't afford it, et cetera. But especially with the S T Rs, it does help hopefully all the neighborhoods. But around me, it absolutely does, because they're not letting maintenance go. They're not letting certain things happen. I mean, they're upkeep, they're painting their homes before they need it. You know, and maybe it is again, to be competitive in a business space. But I think the advantages outweigh, you know, to me, whatever it is, some people don't want them. But I just don't think certain locals maybe look at the bigger picture. And even somebody like me, and all the staff that I have and all their families, it's hundreds of people, and I'm just one guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Andrea Hall, 410 River Island Drive. And if it's okay, I'm gonna read so that I don't forget anything.
Could you move the microphone so it's exactly?
Is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
In 2022 and 2023, I served on the Ad-Hoc Committee for Houseboats and Floating Homes. And that committee worked with Greg Wykamp of Edgewater Resources to provide expertise and help the committee's recommendations. The, in its current iteration, the proposed regulations on floating homes go a long way toward protecting the city and its residents, but it's far from perfect. As it stands, there are two major components to the regulations. One component is zoning, and the other is in the city's code of ordinances. The component in zoning is mostly concerned with definitions and should be approved in its current form. I know that's not happening tonight, but I wanted to get it out there. Planning Commission has already had a chance to review these definitions, and they were approved by a majority of the commission. If City Council chooses not to approve these definitions, any language changes have to go, of the zoning ordinance would require another visit to Planning Commission, thus delaying implementation of any regulations. As for the components of the proposed regulations that are in the city's code of ordinances, this is where changes would be beneficial, and those changes would not be, need to be reviewed by Planning Commission. Moreover, it's my understanding that City Council can request changes be made by city staff and the city attorney prior to the public hearing on these regulations that is scheduled to take place in March. It's also my understanding that these recommendations need to be concrete and specific. So after spending a lot of time on the issue, I would propose that members of City Council consider requesting the following additions. One, permanent sewage hookup, not holding tanks and pump outs. For background, the three current floating homes within the city are advertised to sleep six adults, six showering, toilet-using, dishwashing adults. How large are the holding tanks? I don't know, but I don't want to find out when the surrounding environment's contaminated. This is not a novel idea, and many other municipalities with floating homes require this. Two, increase the number of paved, assigned parking spaces required for floating homes. Currently, a marina is required to have one and a half parking spaces for every slip. Floating homes with the ability to sleep six adults warrant additional paved, assigned parking. Again, this is in line with other municipalities with floating homes. Three, make sure to include four to eight feet of fire separation between floating homes, as the committee recommended and other municipalities require. Four, include all of the floating, flotation and stability recommendations outlined by the Ad-Hoc Committee. That list is extensive and is standard practice when regulating floating homes. Five, annual maintenance and appearance evaluations. Again, it's typical with these sorts of regulations. Six, no open rooftop decks without an appropriate sound buffer. Sound carries over water, and that is doubly true when the noise is coming from an elevated space. Neighbors don't get, get a say in where these floating homes are moored, but they should be protected from them. Seven, if floating homes are not to be regulated, like short-term rentals, even though they're being used identically, marina owners should be held to account via fines, permit revocation, et cetera, with repeated noise or decency violations. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more comments? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through F?
Can I just ask really quickly about Mary's?
Trevor Brooks' question about Mary.
Sure. Happily, we have our attorney, Jeff Sluggitt, here. Jeff?
I can honestly say I've never had this question before. I, typically, in most communities, it would be handled informally, the way I anticipated this was going to be handled, which is simply that the record would reflect the council member.
Oh, could you speak louder, please?
Sorry. Typically, it would be handled informally. The minutes would simply reflect that the council member who had been excused earlier because she was not in attendance, in fact, entered the room. However, now that it's been raised, my recommendation would be, so that everybody is comfortable with what's going on, a motion by any of the six of you, because you were all on the prevailing side, to reconsider the motion to excuse and to affirm the presence of Councilmember Hosley would not be out of order.
Okay. In that case, can I move to reconsider the motion to excuse councilperson Hosley and affirm that she is present?
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Unfortunately, Ms. McKeever stepped out, but maybe we can reach out to her and explain to her that best way, we'll offer assistance to her mom if she has trouble getting the cans in and out. And unfortunately, she stepped out, but hopefully we can track her down.
I think she'll be back.
Okay, good.
Okay, moving on. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I think we had a, I'm sorry, did we have a motion and a second? I think I heard a motion, and then there was a second by George, or George or Joe? I wasn't sure.
Joe and Jeff, I think.
Jeff and Joe both seconded it.
Okay, beg your pardon. Okay. So then we'll just need a roll call.
Is that all?
Yes, there was no modification of it, so this is just the motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through F.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
The roll call.
I, I am sorry. Roll call.
Yes. Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to new business, the council will be asked to consider the approval of the following special event applications. Kate?
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have four special event applications to be considered by the council tonight. If you wish, we may consider these all in one slate. But we have four. We have 2024-08, which is Harbor Fest 2024, to be held June 14th to 16th. This is a three-day festival held down at Harbor Fest, I'm sorry, down at Riverfront Park. There should be no changes from years past. I know that one year, they, I think last year, they had a live animal addition, late addition. They are not looking to do that, so they are looking to years past, just bringing in their normal activities. B is Special Event 2024-09, which is a new event for us, South Haven High School Student Art Fair 2024, which will be held Saturday, May 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in Dyckman Park. As I said, this is a new event. The Arts Fair, the arts students from South Haven High School like to display their artwork. This would not be in contradiction or in conflict with the farmer's market, which starts next weekend. The third event is Special Event 2024-10, Salute to Veterans 2024, which will be held Saturday, August 17th, from 12:00 noon to 1:00 p.m., which is essentially a boat parade that starts at the pierheads into the harbor with a number of boats that are helping take veterans out on fishing trips, and a boat parade celebrating them on their way back in. There's usually a flyover with the hooligan flight team. The fourth event is Special Event 2024-11, The Egg Hunt 2024, to be held on Saturday, March 23rd, from 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. It's a free event sponsored by the Children's, I'm sorry, Children's Museum. I'm sorry for the actual name. And this is at South Beach.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the special events altogether?
I would move to approve Special Event 2024-08, Harbor Fest 2024, as read by the city manager. Special Event 2024-09, South Haven High School Student Art Fair, as read by the city manager. Special Event 2024-10, Salute to Veterans, as read by the city manager. And Special Event 2024-11, Egg Hunt 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The following special events are all approved. Moving on.
Oh, sorry. Mayor, I would just like to note for the record that I abstained from that vote.
Okay, thank you. Next, the city council will be asked to consider approving Resolution 2024-08, a resolution to purchase and acquire construction capital improvements, and to publish a notice of intent to issue municipal securities. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So the city council is being asked to consider a notice of intent resolution, which to purchase, acquire, and issue municipal securities. This would ultimately mean a bonding. This does not obligate the city council at this time to issue any bonds, but this does preserve the opportunity to issue bonds at a later date, should the city council desire to. We have here Dana Byrd, our Public Works Director, and Roger Swets from Dickinson Wright, who is our bond counsel, as well as Shosa's bond counsel, to advise any questions or answer any questions the council may have. The South Haven Water Service 30 must address lead service line replacements and other major system improvements as required by Eagle, our Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. And the total cost of these project improvements is 37 million. Happily, the city and Shosa, rather, received grant notification through the drinking water revolving, state revolving fund, a total of 18 million with a combination of other federal sources. And this covers nearly about 50% of the total project cost. However, the remaining 50% must be covered by loan dollars. And the grant funds are allocated between the lead line replacements and other system improvements. Shosa has been awarded a near, an over $8 million loan through Eagle, and the lead line portion of the project, which accounts for another 23% of the project. However, Shosa must still provide additional matching funds for the remaining 27% of the project. Shosa is looking to secure funding through the USDA, and that's primarily what they're working towards. However, there's a very tight timeline with the drinking water fund that has provided these grant dollars. And so we have to really turn around a very advanced schedule to, to secure this loan funding. USDA also has a number of requirements that do not make it very fast. So Shosa has asked the city of South Haven, the council here, to consider a backup plan or a Plan B for funding for this loan, for these loan dollars, ultimately asking if the city council may consider issuing a notice of intent, thereby preserving our options to secure funding. And so if, if Shosa is able to secure funding with USDA, there's no action that has to be hap, that has to happen. If however, Shosa's unable to secure the USDA loan funding, then Shosa can come to the city council and ask if we may pursue bonding. So it preserves an alternate option for us. Ultimately, this is very good for the ratepayers, who ultimately have to pay back any loan that is taken out. The higher loans that, that Shosa could see on the open market would ultimately have to be paid, paid back by the ratepayers, many of us in this room. And the higher interest rates and higher loan rates would have to be passed on to those customers. Ultimately, we're trying to preserve some options for the ratepayers through this, this action. Now, I do have Roger here to answer any questions and kind of go over any details, as well as Dana. So Roger, you want to come on up?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Appreciate your time tonight. I, I think what I'd like to emphasize mostly is, as the city manager said, we're really trying to get a Plan B in place here. And, and the reason why it's important to have a Plan B in place is there's a long lead time up to these bond issues. And what's really at stake here is trying to make sure that Shosa does not lose the 10, you know, almost 10 and a half million dollars of grant that's been, that's been provided by the state towards this project. The state has very tight timeframes. If we don't meet those timeframes, the state will rescind that grant requirement. These grant dollars are going away in future years because this is ARPA money, and we're getting to the, to the end of that whole ARPA process. This was a little bit of an unusual situation this year, because the state actually had more grant money than loan money available. So in a normal year, the state would fund both parts of this, and we wouldn't have to do any extra work. But Shosa and the city through Shosa was, was fortunate enough to get a very large grant allocation, and it's just coming up with those matching dollars that we need to do. The USDA Rural Development Program, which Shosa could hopefully issue a bond through directly, is definitely the better financial option, and that is our Plan A. But just with timing with them, if, if, if that Plan A doesn't materialize, we really wanted to take this to you so that we wouldn't be left in a situation where we didn't have a Plan B, and that, that grant money could be lost. This, at this point, is just the first step. It's just opening the door. It does not obligate the city to anything. There will be at least two or three future actions that this council would have to take for this project to move forward through the city. But if we don't take the first step, you may not have the opportunity to, to consider those, those future steps. But absolutely, there would be nothing further that would happen without the approval of this board, so I did want you to know that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I would move to approve Resolution 2024-08, a resolution to purchase, acquire, and construction capital improvements, and to publish a notice of intent to issue municipal securities.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes.
No, I just wanted to thank staff and everyone for being so proactive and providing us opportunities and fallback positions.
Thank you. So the Resolution 2024-08, a resolution to purchase, acquire, construction capital improvements, and to publish a notice of intent to issue municipal securities is approved.
We didn't vote. He was trying to get your attention to.
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next, the city council will be asked.
Mayor, I beg your pardon to interrupt, but bond counsel, just let me know that we need a roll call on this vote.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Roll call, please?
Arnold, yes. Arnold?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Moving on, the city council will be asked to consider taking the following actions to regulate floating homes, houseboats, and floating commercial structures. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. I do know that we have a number of actions asked to be taken tonight. And myself and Griffin are here to answer a number of questions. Griffin has kind of taken the lead on the floating homes, and I'll leave him to kind of walk through what's being asked tonight, as well as what's being proposed with regulatory ordinances, as well as zoning ordinances for the city council. Griffin?
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this before you. I know there have been, I guess, many emails submitted by some of you with some questions or concerns related to this topic. So I'm gonna go ahead and start with just some background information, and then I'm happy to do the best I can to answer any questions you all may have. So just in terms of background... Um, so just in terms of, of background, um, this has been a topic that, uh, the city has been working on, um, for almost two years at this point, and also a topic that's been brought before, before you all on several occasions. So going back to January of 2022, the city council voted to establish an ad hoc committee, um, to review possible regulations for houseboats and floating homes. Uh, this really arose, uh, based on some concerns expressed by members of the public that were brought to some of you on the city council, who in turn, uh, brought the topic to the city manager. Um, and ultimately, uh, an ad hoc committee was proposed. This committee conducted a series of meetings, uh, all of which, uh, records are on our website, if any of you would like to, to view those, and ultimately prepared a list of recommendations that were brought before the city council on April 17th of 2023. At that time, there was not a lot of discussion, uh, of those recommendations by the city council, but they did direct city staff to move forward, uh, with the development of ordinance language. On June 5th, the city council adopted a resolution, uh, which imposed a six-month moratorium on the development of floating homes. And then, uh, that resolution was ultimately, or that, excuse me, that moratorium was ultimately extended for an additional nine months towards the end of last year. On December 19th, um, well, let me back up again. So on December 4th, when that resolution was extended, uh, the initial drafts of these ordinance were brought before the city council for feedback. Um, the focus at that time really seemed to be on the extension of the moratorium, so there was not a lot of feedback provided at that time. Nevertheless, on December 19th, the Harbor Commission, uh, was brought these drafts. Um, and they recommended not moving forward with them, uh, because they felt it wasn't necessary and the topic wasn't an issue, uh, that needed to be regulated at this time. Those, uh, proposed ordinances were then brought before the Planning Commission. And on February 1, uh, the, a public hearing was held and the Planning Commission voted to recommend, uh, that the city council approve the draft language to amend the zoning ordinance, which is one of the two aspects of, uh, the floating home, the floating home ordinance package. Um, but they, uh, did not vote on the draft language to amend the code of ordinances because it fell outside of their scope. So what we have before you all, uh, this evening is two different ordinances. The first is an ordinance to amend a section of the zoning ordinance, uh, which du- excuse me, does primarily focus on adding some definitions relating to houseboats, floating homes, floating commercial structures. Um, but also looks at allowing, um, these in the B3, uh, district. There's also a second ordinance to amend, uh, Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances to create a new article, which would, uh, create an annual registration and inspection process to either more or rent a floating home in the city of South Haven, require a certificate of acceptability from the Michigan Bureau of Construction Codes, essentially setting minimum construction standards and limit, uh, these, uh, these units to two per marina. There's also some other things, such as insurance signage, insurance and signage regulations that are included in there, that if there are specific questions, I'm happy, uh, to go into in more detail. So how about I leave it there for right now? And I'm sure there'll be questions, and I'm happy to do the best I can to answer those.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I do, Madam Chair, um, sorry, can't. Uh, so I had sent in my comments, um, and I think it's, I don't think this is the first time. I, I appreciate the concern raised by, um, Ms. Hall with regard to the lack of incorporating all of the recommendations from the ad hoc committee that were part of the direction from the city council back on, in April 2023. One direction was to have it be by special land use. And that, my, from my understanding from the Planning Commission meeting, it was decided to not use the special, special land use process. I agree that, or I, I share the same concerns that were discussed tonight among the, the various residents who spoke. Some of them are with regard to the sewage, especially if there's no bubblers and, um, they're only holding tanks as opposed to required hookup. And ensuring that they're properly pumped and that the material pumped out of them is properly disposed of because of the harm that it can do to the environment and especially with us having a public fishing location directly downstream from the location where three of them exist right now, which also then goes down along the pier, which multiple people fish at. And that could just be, a small, a small problem, um, could result in a huge impact on our tourist industry and our health. There's also concern about some of the, um, safety issues that Ms. Hall raised. And many of those were in the recommendations, and those did not get incorporated into the ordinance. So my preference, and I would like guidance, um, is it seems that more work could be done. And, and I believe, I think you inadvertently said extended nine months. I think it, the moratorium was extended six months, so it expires in June of this year for the, the houseboat. Correct?
Are you ready for me to respond? There, there's been a lot of questions there, so you just tell me when you're ready.
Yeah, so, I mean, tho- those are, you know, the highlights of, you know, just reiterating what the residents had raised. And my main question, the reason I asked about the moratorium end date, is that it seems like these would be not too difficult to incorporate, um, with the assistance of council, and that it would be a more complete package to have everything brought at the same time and set for a public hearing. Because the regulatory can stay within us and does not have to go back to the plan, doesn't go to the Planning Commission in the first place. It would just be, I think, a more efficient use of time to have one public hearing on both ordinances that are tied to each other. And, um, it would be fewer trips for residents. We would have a complete package. It would be, um, a more efficient use of our time also. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so I will do my best to answer the questions included there. And if I forget one, just remind me, and I'm, I'm happy to jump back. So yes, if I misspoke and said nine months, that was inadvertent. The, uh, moratorium was put in place for six months and then extended for an additional six months. So I apologize if I, uh, misspoke. In regard to the statement that there were recommendations made by the ad hoc committee and brought before the city council that were not incorporated, I think I can hopefully, uh, remedy many of those concerns. Starting with the, uh, original recommendation, uh, that it'd be explored as a special land use. Um, I, I think before I get into this, I, I think we also want to jump back and go, you know, if it was city council's intent over a year ago that these recommendations be taken as, um, as Bible or be taken as law and be brought back exactly as recommended, then, then yes. What, what we ultimately have is, is not exactly that. But those were definitely used as the guidance and the inspiration to get us to where we are now. Uh, we've learned a lot of things over the last year. It's been discussed with council as, uh, why we needed, uh, the original moratorium and then the moratorium extension. So, uh, ultimately, you know, we've learned some things that have, have been able to guide us to the point that we are. So in regard to special land uses, um, yes, originally, the, uh, ad hoc committee discussed a few different ways of, of potentially, um, regulating, uh, this. And that was one that was originally put in the recommendation. Um, since then, uh, this city council and the community have had many conversations, uh, more akin to the conversation of short-term rentals about the challenge that making, uh, short-term rentals a land use has presented. So instead of making floating homes and, uh, houseboats specific land uses as expressed in the zoning ordinance, uh, instead, they were, at the advice of council, to be regulated in the regulatory ordinance primarily. So if you look at the zoning ordinance section that, uh, is brought before you all, um, specifically, it includes all of the definitions that we've discussed, includes the floating commercial uses as a listed and would be allowed land use. But then just clarifies that these floating homes would be something, uh, that could take place at a marina, which is a previously established land use. And then clarifies that, um, they would need a permit granted by the city clerk pursuant to the proposed new chapter in the city code. So the idea behind that is we're still getting everyone to the same place they wanted to go, which is we're adding definitions, we're adding a regulatory structure, um, for these, these floating homes, but without the express intent of creating them as grandfathered land uses, which we've had several conversations to you all about, uh, the challenges that, that is presented over time related to short-term rentals. Does that help with that topic?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to, uh, where was the next one? Uh, sewer requirements. So as you've seen in the proposed ordinance, there's specific language related to, uh, water hookups. There's specific, specific language, uh, associated with, uh, electric hookups. And it's a good question of why is there not a specific sentence in there about sewage hookups? And the reason for that was intentionally, when drafting, uh, this regulation, we didn't want to duplicate other regulations that already exist, uh, somewhere in, uh, a city ordinance. We have found over the last several years that this, uh, duplication, while good intended, is often the, uh, often the crux of some of the contradictions we find in the ordinance over time. And we're trying to restate one piece of an ordinance somewhere else. Um, just changing one word or, or thinking you're saying the exact same thing over time can end up meaning many different things. We see this i- in a few different ways in, in some of our ordinance and are some of the things we're trying to clean up as we go through the zoning ordinance, um, rewrite process. So, uh, you know, another example of that was why additional parking requirements were not included. Um, this was something I, I believe Councilman Sleeper brought up one of the times this was brought up before, is, you know, why isn't parking addressed? And, you know, the, the response at that time was, well, staff felt that parking is addressed because these floating homes can only take place in marinas and marinas already have their own, uh, parking requirements. And what was also said at that time, and will be my answer also to the, to the sewer, um, aspect, is, um, that is, uh, the reasoning for it not being included at this time is to avoid the duplication of other regulations that already exist. But if you all on city council do not feel like that is adequate, um, please let me know how you would like to see that added and, and we can, we can look to add something more, um, specific or more explicit in this new ordinance, if that's what you all would really like to see. I do think it's important to note, though, that requiring a floating home to hook up to the municipal sewer system is likely not going to be a possible option. We, we, we don't have the, the infrastructure for that. If you think about how, um, these are hooked up to water, they're not hooked up the same way a, a house is. They're, they're hooked up with, uh, essentially a glorified hose, like most other, um, boat or maritime type structures are. Um, so, you know, in response to the, the pump out, that, that is the adequate way that these are addressed. That's not so dimmer, or not so, uh, dissimilar to, um, think about a mobile home or, or some of these other types of, of structures, um, that have these kind of residential character and yet are also semi-mobile. So, uh, you know, if there's, if there's something that you all would like to see that's more specific about how these are cleaned out or how sewage is addressed, we can definitely look into that. Um, but that was the reasoning for how it is at, at this time. I think the last question you said, then, then I'll stop for now and you guys can add more questions or tell me if I forgot one, um, is you made some comments about, you know, wanting to see some changes made and that this would be a good time. Um, I'm not really in a position to tell you, you know, that, that's right or wrong. What I, what I can say is that, you know, staff has been, uh, working on, uh, this topic for close to two years now and, um, have taken, have done the best we can with the direction we were provided from the ad hoc committee. Um, ultimately, we've brought this to council a few times or ha- you know, haven't gotten a ton of direction at that point, except, you know, the, the, kind of the general, please keep moving on with this. So I, I will just say that, you know, at this point in time, um, you know, our goal is to get something in place by the end of the moratorium. Uh, the cheesy advice I tend to give you all is think progress over perfection. It's going to be nearly impossible to ever have an ordinance that's absolutely perfect, particularly the first time. Um, but at this point in time, I feel like our team has done what we can on this. So if there are, uh, changes you all would like to see, uh, all I would ask is please be specific about the language you would like to see added or removed, and we will do the best we can to get that incorporated for you.
Thank you.
To jump in, there's your former harbor master, and I know Griffin has that title now. Um, we had a question tonight as, you know, I don't want, people don't want to see these floating homes in your municipal marinas, which make up about a quarter of the slips in the harbor. Currently, with the slip, um, license applications that we have, the lease agreements that we have, floating homes are not allowed. Only vessels that, that can be powered by their own will or their own, under their own power can be placed in the marinas. Also, the marinas have, and then this is part of the, the, the lease agreement that they all have to, um, sign. So boats that, so you're looking at houseboats, you're looking at, um, boats that must, um, get into, into the slip by its own power. There are no platformed, um, conveyances now being defined under floating homes under this ordinance are not allowed. So I want to kind of underscore that with the, the council and just reassure folks that that's kind of restricted already with the municipal marinas.
And maybe more importantly, the municipal, uh, the seasonal slip agreements used at the municipal marinas, in addition to what Kate mentioned, we do not, we do not allow any renting or subleasing or any commercial activities out of our standard seasonal slip agreement. The only commercial activities that are allowed in the municipal marinas require commercial, uh, license agreements that are explicitly brought before you all for consideration before approval. So I, I, I also definitely, uh, respect the, the comments and concerns there. There's, there is no intent to allow floating homes at the municipal marinas now or, uh, anytime that I can see in the future. But, you know, that could be a policy decision that you all make at some point in time. But I, I don't think that's something to worry about right now.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
I did not.
This is, as you heard, this is the time to let our staff know, uh, what we want. So if you have any questions or concerns.
Um, I just have one question for clarification. Um, so as the ordinance reads right now, private marinas can have how many floating homes in them?
Up to two.
Up to two per marina?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm just going to say that, um, I was looking at this a lot when I was on Planning Commission. And you've got, on one hand, you've got the Harbor Commission that says, we don't need to do anything on this. I think we do need to do something. Uh, I think there's no incentive for marinas to operate floating homes that are unsafe or, or that are prone to, uh, discharges or anything like that or have inadequate parking. So I'm okay with these ordinance changes the way they are right now. I think it strikes a good compromise between, you know, what the Harbor Commission wanted and what I think, me being on city council when the, when we were asked to, staff to incorporate the ad hoc committee's guidance, I wasn't thinking that they were going to do it exactly. I thought they were going to use their own good judgment and provide us something that meets the intent of what the ad hoc committee was, was suggesting. And I think that's what they did.
Madam Mayor, if I can make one more comment that's hopefully helpful for the group. I will also share that, you know, the planning commission and city staff have received some feedback from Harbor Club. That's the location of the floating homes that currently exist. They have expressed, you know, many questions and concerns about the proposed ordinance. I expect that they will be sending those to you later this week. But in the meantime, we've shared the feedback we've received from them already with legal counsel. So you all can be rest assured that, you know, we're aware that, you know, those questions and concerns exist and we'll work through those appropriately.
Thank you.
If nobody else, it just sounds like there are more concerns coming in. And again, I'm thinking of efficiency. And we have until June 5th, and I understand it will be here before we know it. Time just flies, especially once the warm air comes. But I'm reminded of us having to redo the fireplace ordinance, which was just passed last year, I mean, last session after two years, and the environmental impact statement, both of which had to be redone because of unintended consequences, unappreciated consequences. And so I agree, things don't have to be perfect. But I respectfully think that there have been some significant concerns raised with issues that don't appear to be adequately addressed. And it would be more efficient for us to get, review this with looking at the different concerns so that maybe we can actually have a discussion and possibly meet in the middle. We're not, everybody is happy, but we're accepting of the changes and we appreciate where we can go from there so that we're on the same page. We come together as a community and we listen and have discourse. And I appreciate that this was brought to the city council back in January '22. But I also remember, and it's also supported with the minutes, you know, with how busy staff was it, the houseboat didn't really get off the ground until September because everybody was busy and even, I believe, the members that were going to serve on it were busy. It was hard to find time. So no disrespect, it's just, I hate to have haste make waste when potentially if we waited and set it for the second, you know, the third Monday, the second meeting of March, we might have something more definite, more agreeable to those involved that have expressed concern. And we would have only one public hearing and we could deal with them, we could address them simultaneously.
Griffin, I'm not hearing haste from city staff. Would you like to comment?
You all can set the public hearing for whenever you'd like. You all can choose not to set a public hearing. That's your prerogative. I guess I'll just repeat that, you know, regardless of when you all set the public hearing, if there are changes you all would like to see, it would be really helpful if you could be very specific about those. Because I think at this point in time, staff's taken this about as far as we can without any additional guidance from the city council.
And my point was, there hasn't been haste working on this. It sounds like the staff has spent a long time on this.
Yes, we've been working on this topic for some time.
Okay, any other comments?
If I may respond.
According to Roberts Rules of Order, you're allowed two comments during debate.
Can I comment? I guess I am thinking if, you know, there's concern that Ms. Hall brought up today and then obviously councilperson Hosley's concerns. To me, it doesn't really make a difference if we did move it out to March 18th to that meeting and then maybe we would have, give you guys more time to tweak things if you needed to.
Again, I'm fine with that. But again, we're talking about moving it back and that staff's going to tweak things. What are those tweaks you all would like to see made? I'm happy to work with, I mean, we will do the best we can to make those things happen. We just need to know what those changes are.
Well, I feel like, again, Ms. Hall brought up some points. I don't know if she emailed them or not, but I feel like she had some concerns that I couldn't even write them down because there were so many that she mentioned.
So the city council would like us to go back, listen to Ms. Hall's concerns and get those incorporated for the draft we bring back. Is that what?
Is there a motion on that? Just so we're all on the same page as what council wants?
I did write them down and Griffin actually addressed all, most of them. He talked about, Ms. Hall mentioned sewage, parking, he addressed both of those. Fire separation was another one she mentioned, but I know Chief Hens recently was engaged in the conversation. I didn't see any worries from him. Inspections, were they going to be inspected?
So there's going to be, there's going to be an inspection process that's included both for the city ordinance. But I really would like to draw all your attention if I can. So I'm looking at page 133 of the packet. Specifically, this is section 38-93, application for a permit. And then I'm going down to A5. Talks about a copy of a certificate of acceptability issued by the Michigan Bureau of Construction Codes. So one of the delays in this whole process was communicating with, communicating back and forth with our partners at the state agencies. And, you know, I know one of the concerns we had in the building department here locally was, what codes do we use to inspect these? It's not really a building, so you know, think about a lot of aspects like foundations and so on and so forth of the building code don't necessarily apply. And we were emailing back and forth with Laura. And what they ultimately told us is, well, it sounds like these should fall under the certificate of acceptability of this certain section more pertaining to, think of a, like a mobile home. And we said, okay, is that something you all have been doing? And they said, not that we're aware of, but that's what it should be done. So that's what we've incorporated into this draft ordinance. And, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, that's something that, you know, if council moves forward with this, someone interested in installing one of these would need to work forward with Laura because that's the direction they've at least given us to date. So there's a few different inspections and entities that would be, you know, involved in those, you know, quote unquote, the minimum construction standards that the committee wanted to make sure get incorporated.
And you have to assume that any kind of inspection like that also is going to take into consideration fire, safety? I mean.
I definitely don't, that's an area I'm definitely not an expert in, so I don't want to speak for the fire department. But I do know that, you know, Shays has been contacted by a member of the council with some questions, you know, about this. And I believe they were able to have a conversation. I do know that our, our local fire department, so Shays, they have their own fire code that they work through with their, you know, their regulations.
So we filed the International Fire Code, the 2015 version. In talking with the fire department folks, their only aspect that they would look at is egress. But we're still looking at what does the fire code apply to when it comes to floating homes? As you, if you've ever gone to any of the harbor kind of work group as to what happens with, if there's an incident in the harbor, I mean, the fire marshal will tell you, you cannot have a grill on the deck of your boat and things like that. So there are some things that are applying, but some things do not apply because the International Fire Code is silent on many things when it comes to floating homes.
And that's maybe a good recap for this kind of whole topic of just, as a friendly reminder to the city council, like regulating these floating homes in general is not something a lot of Michigan communities are doing. They're not saying it's a free-for-all, they're not saying there's none, they're just semi, they're just generally silent on these. That in general is another reason where, again, I'm going to respectfully say, you know, let's think progress over perfection because perfection's not really going to exist in this type of regulatory scheme right now because there's, it's not largely hashed out. There's not a lot of court cases on these types of things in the state of Michigan. There's not a lot of sample ordinances for us to use. We looked at some examples going back through that ad hoc committee. Mary, I think you've submitted some examples to us. My caution there is, you know, we can learn from those and we have taken parts there. But there's also different state codes and different state laws and different kind of state structures throughout the country that differ from ours. So, you know, we've done the best we can to try to put one of these together. But that's the challenging part of being more on the front end of a topic like this.
And just a reminder that when, when these motions are, have enough votes and are passed, there will be a public hearing on March 4th. So that does give us more time. Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to set a public hearing on March 18th, 2024, for the ordinance to amend sections 201.6, 201.8, 201.13, 201.19, and 901 of the South Haven zoning ordinance and ordinance to amend chapter 38 of the South Haven Code of Ordinances to create a new Article 5 entitled Floating Homes to provide for the licensing of floating homes within marinas.
I'll second.
Just for clarification, does the public hearing require that one of these amendments is passed first?
No.
I believe that what you're going to need to do is have a motion to introduce these ordinances so that when you do have a public hearing, you are able to approve those at your second reading.
Okay. Was there a motion or a second?
Yes.
But it was premature. We needed to move to introduce the ordinances versus set the public hearing.
You can set the public hearing, provided that at some point tonight, hopefully someone introduces these. Otherwise, your public hearing is not really going to have any effect.
Could I amend the motion to include introduction of said ordinances?
Absolutely.
And set the public hearing for March 18th?
So this is a motion to?
Amend the motion.
Amend the motion? And approve A and B or?
Yeah, so my understanding, if I'm reading, if I'm understanding this correctly, the motion is to amend the original motion to schedule the public hearing on March 18th for said sections for the zoning ordinance and said sections of the regulatory ordinance to include the introduction of those said ordinances as part of the original motion. Does that make sense?
Yes. With the public hearing on March 18th?
And we'll need a second on that amendment, yes.
I'll second it.
All in favor of amending that?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment passes and now we go back to the original? Is there a motion to approve the?
No, no, no. So what's done now is that, so now we've amended that motion. So now the motion on the floor is to approve, I'm sorry, to introduce the ordinances as stated as well as schedule a public hearing on March 18th.
Great.
On those ordinances.
Great, thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
We already have.
We already have.
Okay. And so this is a motion for 13A, B, and to set a public hearing?
Yes, and set the public hearing to occur on March 18th instead of March 4th as has been written in the agenda.
Right, okay. All in favor? Say yes.
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 Opposed? The whole motion passes. So this is a motion to introduce an ordinance to amend sections 201.6, 201.8, 201.13, 201.19, and 901 of the South Haven zoning ordinance regarding water development and regulating floating homes and floating commercial structures and to introduce an ordinance to amend chapter 38 of the South Haven Code of Ordinances to create a new Article 5 entitled Floating Homes to provide for the licensing of floating homes within marinas and scheduling a public hearing on this topic for March 18th. Moving on. Number 14, city council will be asked to consider a resolution to impose a moratorium on the issuance of non, new non-exempt business short-term rental certificates. Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will be asked to consider approving Resolution 2024-09, which is a resolution to impose a six-month moratorium on the registration and commencement of the new short-term rental business units and to cancel the lottery or the drawing for 2024. The city council has been conducting workshops and reviews of the short-term rental ordinances since mid-2023 and is still working on the review or on ordinance amendments. And even though council is still working to amend those STR ordinances, the city council has communicated to me that they are looking at prohibiting the distribution of those 27 new business non-exempt short-termal permits, which would be conducted by a random lottery, a random drawing slash lottery. Based on those conversations that I've had with a number of you, city staff have worked with legal counsel to draft a moratorium that's been presented in the city council's packet for tonight. And this has no other effect in modifying the ordinances, but does put a pin in it, if you will, with a moratorium to prevent the lottery, to prevent the distribution of those 27 new non-exempt business licenses. And that's how it has been written. Is there any questions on that?
Mr. Reeser?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-09, a resolution to impose a six-month moratorium on the registration and commencement of the new STR business units and to cancel the lottery for 2024.
Did you second it? Any more discussion? I just want to say that I want to explain my vote. I'm voting no. I was not elected to pass moratoriums. I was elected to make decisions. So I just want to let you know why I'm voting no. Okay. Mr. Sleeper?
I guess I feel that we are going in the direction where we are going to be changing our short-term rental ordinance. So I think this moratorium is prudent. I don't necessarily agree with some of the topics as far as what short-term rentals do, which is listed in the moratorium, but I feel that the moratorium is the right step at this point, so.
Any other discussion?
I heard a lot of comments tonight and I'm concerned that there's confusion that this moratorium will prevent all business STR permits and will result in no business STRs. And I have never intended that to happen. I share the same concern that the city has been looking at amending the short-term rental ordinance. We are at a point where the moratorium will give us an opportunity to have reasoned discussion for the new council to figure out what is best for the community as a whole, for all stakeholders. And that although the moratorium on the permits is going into place now, it will be what our decisions, discussions and subsequent decisions on amendments will do for the, whatever residual STRs are now or whatever cap is set. And I think Kate had said, has put a pin in right now. And it just helps us have more flexibility. And my goal is to have a program that allows our business, our community to thrive and keeping in check. and keeping in check with helping our community be a year-round community. Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Reeser?
Since I made the motion, I'd like to comment on, on my thinking. I heard comments tonight, I've heard them for six months, I heard them for a year. I just want to add, there's not good and bad people, there's not black and white. This is a whole lot of gray. I think short-term rentals have done a lot of good for the community, as is outlined tonight. I think the residents do have concerns for the community they live in. They have valid concerns. When the gentleman talked about the financial side of it, it's hard to put a financial dollar sign to how you feel about your neighborhood and how you feel about your neighbors. I think it's time we stop looking strictly at dollar signs, as one resident said, and look at the quality of life of people in this community. And that should be the driving force. But whatever we come up with, I think the moratorium gives us time to take a breath and look at this thing holistically, not one little piece, but look at the whole big picture. And I take your point, Mayor, that you want action. But I think they get the action, we can't rush it. And we've spent this many years getting to this point, let's take a little more time and delve into it. And I do think this whole lottery issue is hard for staff to manage. And I don't think other communities do lotteries. And I'd like to have that looked at and possibly go away and have a, an absolute number. So that's my rationale for the moratorium.
Any other comments? Roll call, please. Oh, yep, we're set, right.
Okay, Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on, the city council will be asked to receive an update from Public Works Director Dana Byrd.
First update.
Hello, Mayor Brown and council members.
Good evening.
Yeah, thanks for having me here tonight. Last time I came and talked to you, it was a blizzard outside. And now it's like spring, so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what's been going on at Public Works. And it's been a lot of groundbreaking. So in spring, we, we see the ground thaw and contractors start to move around. And so we did start construction at the wastewater treatment plant. That is a $10 million project with $3,600,000 worth of grant funding. So that is kicking off down at the treatment plant. You may see a crane start to be mobilized down there by the river. We've also started a lot of potholing of service lines as part of our lead line investigation and replacement. We have crews on Public Works out there potholing the street. We're also starting to mobilize crews for additional lead line replacements. We've been out cold patching a lot of the roadways. So you may have seen our street department crews out there trying to fill some of the worst potholes with cold patch to get us through there. And we also started work on Kids' Corner, the additional phase at Kids' Corner Park that the council approved several months ago. Competence has been out there prepping areas for future playground equipment and a walking path. In addition, our other departments of Public Works have been working on electric meter changeouts and outage responses. We, we've had a lot of special event coordination happening. I'm sure you all know that all the special event applications come through Public Works and get reviewed by all of our different department heads. And then we've also been working on the locker room design, which is a project that the city council put some ARPA spending toward. So that is in design, we're hoping to go to bid in the next few months. Other than that, we've been doing a lot of capital improvement planning, looking at the year ahead, looking at budgeting for the next year. And yeah, that's some of the highlights, I included a report in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
First, I want to say Happy Engineers Week.
Oh, thank you.
I think in one of our previous meetings, there was a discussion about a, potentially a couple new electric vehicle charging stations. I wonder if you could, if you have any new information on that?
Yeah, I don't have an update on that yet. I have to follow up with Ready Charge and see how that, if that was awarded or not. Yep, but I can follow up on that, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Under your engineering projects section, the Huron Street Design and the bridge projects, would you be able to expand on those a little bit?
Okay, down under engineering projects?
Yep.
Yeah, the city received some small urban funding, which we applied for in prior years. And that would be an upcoming project. I believe construction wouldn't happen until fiscal year '26. So we're just in the stage of evaluating what was in that grant application and then working with a consultant to design it. So we have not even put out proposals for that yet. So that's one project that I'm still getting up to speed on, but I know that it's coming and that we have some funding for it. And look forward to giving you more information in future updates.
And then, did you have any details on the bridge projects?
On upcoming?
The bridge projects as well?
Yeah, a lot of the bridge projects were related to ongoing inspections, annual inspections. We also have a scour project that we're looking at rescoping in the next few months, working with a consultant on that. But yeah, mostly the, the bridge projects are ongoing inspections and then the items that come out of those inspections, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
I would just say for your first update, you crushed it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to thank you for everything that your department does, especially with all the special events that we expect to be seeing in the next several months.
Yeah, well, thank you, we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Next public comment from citizens in the audience who want to speak on items not on the agenda. Yay!
Like Arnold said, I'm Bach. Bob Metzen, 130 Van Buren. I just want to make one recommendation and is that, is that this council and city look, and maybe it's working with the township, working with Casco Township, but I would get an economic development team. I mean, everything we talked about earlier today about living in this community is you got to afford to live here. Now, let's forget about the pricing of the houses that exist today. But any of us, if you have a house, you got a mortgage, you got to have a job. And there's just not enough jobs in the area to support, especially if you have a change. You're going to do STR change, now you're going to have a bunch of, you know, people that may or may not be able to afford them. I've read stories of what's happened up in Muskegon and there's families that are going to lose homes because they can't afford not having the STR. And that's okay, I'm okay with that. But if you really want this to become a community, make it economically viable. Things changed a lot in the last 30 years, so get an economic development guy, not somebody you're paying 15,000 a year as a consultant, but get somebody in here and work with the other communities to get it done. There's plenty of land around here in Texas, there's plenty of land just outside of the city to build houses and stuff. You couldn't tell me by looking at me, I bike a lot, there's all kinds of property around here. You can live five minutes outside this great community. You don't really even have to live in the four or five blocks right on the lake, you can still have access to that. I lived in Illinois, I would have loved to live in Glencoe, Kendall, Worthless Place, I couldn't afford it. So I settled for where I lived. But I will tell you one last thing, you, you got to get this done. I mean, there was no better satisfaction when we moved here. Our whole community was changing, it went from families raising kids. And we took great pride as a lot of us retired and moved away. Guess what, families with kids came back in. But that's because they had jobs and opportunities, so get the opportunities here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trevor Brooks, 559 Phoenix. I've been coming to these meetings now for, I think, maybe a year and a half. And there's a couple of things that I've kind of noticed that come out of them. And I can offer a solution, but one of them is the amount of work that staff needs to do. It seems like they're burdened. And a lot of it, you know, comes from doing research and, you know, providing all that kind of stuff, which is, I'm not even sure necessarily part of their job. You know, running a city this size is, is a full-time job as it is. And then the second thing is, is when it comes to ideas, it's a challenge, you know. Not everybody is an idea person, some people are doers and all kinds of things. And so the, the solution I was listing, and it was the first time ever, kind of came to me, was with this houseboat thing is how these ad hoc equations, you know, take advantage, if, if, take advantage of them, put together, you know, research groups to help Kate do, you know, research on, you know, housing, you know, all those kinds of things. Get more data in front of yourselves, get more ideas in front of yourselves, and do it in this, you know, in this ad hoc way, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Linderman, 543 Quaker. I'm on the Van Buren-Cass County Health Board and I just want to make sure that you guys know that you are well-represented. So please, if you have any topics coming up with the health board, we meet on the even months in Lawrence and the odd months, we meet in Duwajak. And if anybody's interested in any questions on the health, what's going on with the Van Buren County, Cass County Health Board, I'm your representative from this area and I'd be glad to help get the information back and forth to you. So thanks for your indulgence tonight. I'm glad our board meetings don't meet this long, but thanks for all your patience and.
Thank you and thanks for your service on the board.
Aaron Cobb, again, 914 Center Street. And I would say that, I just want to say this because probably I would be coming to that many more meetings. I've been in South Haven over 50 years and I've seen a lot of changes in South Haven. I've seen jobs come, seen jobs go. And I have just a question about the houses, affordable houses. Without the job, they won't be in affordable houses because developers not going to come here and build no house. And my question is, why don't the city build houses, the affordable houses that they, that everybody complaining about? Why don't the city build them and they can rent them for, you know, affordable prices? No developer going to come here and, and build a house that Walmart, people working at Walmart can buy. And you know that. And I would ask this question, either one of you on the council, if you sold your house tomorrow, would you sell it to a person that working at, that Walmart could afford to buy your house? Would you drop the price down while they could afford to buy? That's the question I would like to ask. And as the other lady asks, if you, tonight, you said no more short-term rental, some people got mortgages on the houses they built. How many if the house you think you would have sitting in South Haven that walk away and the bank would have? How many? That's what I want you to think about. And I don't want to sit in South Haven, shoot yourself in the foot, I've been here a long time. And most of the people that complain about the short-term rental, they have somewhere to stay. Most of the people showing about the short-term, I'm 77 years old, most, most of them, as old as I am or older, you got to think about the next generation coming. And you said, think about the short-term rental without employment here. Yes, you build affordable houses, but three people might come here a year, two school teachers a year or something like that. If you got a factory coming here with 1,800 people, I guarantee developers coming here and build some houses. Otherwise, the city need to build their own houses that they talking about, you know. And I would say this, like I say, the moratorium on, on STR, yes. I'm in a business district, I'm in a business. And I can't get a business, in the one that feel like that. If they have a permit, they should give their permits up. I mean, that's all I have to say, you know. I've been, like I said, I've been here over 50 years and I've been through a lot, I know about the rental business. I've been in the rental business over 30 years. And I just told you, I have a full, full unit apartment and I rent it and I rent it under, you know, a fair market value, because I could afford to do it before when I bought it. If I were buying it today, I couldn't rent it under fair market value. But it's a lot of things that you sit on the council and you can say and you can talk about if you have never experienced it. It's easy to talk about stuff, so don't shoot yourself in the foot, the city got a long way to go. And all people my age older than me can break, you can bring the city down. And I want to use the word curse, don't put a curse on the city, don't bring the city down.
Thank you. Any more comments?
My comments today, Chelsea, 327 Edgel. I have to commute a lot on Kalamazoo Street. There's no connecting roads like from that area to Broadway. My concern is that there has been a random stop sign placed on Elkenberg Street, right there at the corner of Elkenberg and Kalamazoo. And you travel another block, what would it be, south? And there's another stop sign. So I'm like kind of confused, I guess, as to why the city would have chose to put a stop sign and then a stop sign right at the other block. My personal opinion is that it's for reasons because of the location close to Elkenberg Park. Another concern I would have to bring up is that, I'll just be on the record and say, in comments, Mr. Cobb, I don't think the city wants to put affordable housing in on their end because it's not good for their optics to have poor Walmart workers and poor single families living here. I think that they want the optics to look great and look very visually appealing for the people that they try to have come to this community. So I think it's just a lot easier for the city to say, hey, you pores can go live in Pullman or Covert or the surrounding areas and commute here because they just don't simply want low-income people here. It's great to say we want the teachers, we want the EMT workers, we want those people that look favorable to our optics and demographic. But nobody has came up here and said, other than Mr. Cobb so far, that we want homes for the people that are less fortunate, like the people that are working the bar late at night down at Clementine's, the lady that, or man that might be waitressing or bussing your table. Those people need representation too, not just the middle-class folks that we want to attract to our town. Thirdly, I would like to say, I think maybe we should like reconsider doing something with Broadway in regards to the bike lane that's there. I think it's really non-functional in the city time. It makes it a complete hassle to be able to pull out going left or right. I don't know what solution would be best. My personal opinion is that we try to maybe look into putting a traffic light right there at the intersection of Broadway, like near the old central school building, like it used to be way back in my childhood, just to kind of maybe like regulate some of that traffic and to slow the one lane on each side of traffic down to where people can be able to access Broadway a little bit easier. But other than that, that's really it, those are my, my three comments.
Thank you.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. Couple of comments, one, I do like what the young lady said about the stop sign on Elkenberg there, right in front of the park. I think that was done with haste, that's my opinion, I think it was done with haste. Makes no sense, you stop about 15 feet, 20 feet before the next stop sign. I think the council should take a look at maybe removing that. When you go to Kids' Corner, you can park all around Kids' Corner. They have access, I believe, to park except on Monroe Boulevard. I don't think you can park on one side of the street of that park. All the other locations, you can park all around it. I'm going to ask the council to consider revisiting, yellowing out the parking spaces all around Elkenberg Park except for the main thruway, which is Elkenberg Street. The parking used to be on the side street, I believe it's Humphrey. Now they forced the parking to be on the main thruway and that's where you get your traffic jams. That's where I have to come out every Saturday night, early Sunday morning, whenever, to pick up garbage because you force the kids to park in front of the church. And so it's a lot of, I've seen a lot of traffic through there being bagged up and kids not getting out of the streets, that's just the day and time we're living in. And a lot of our tourists, I stopped right in front of my church waiting on kids to move. That's because the parking is better suited on the side street. That was done because a couple of people that chose to purchase homes around the park start complaining. But that was something that they should have recognized when they bought the home, bought the park. So we need to revisit that. The other thing is, I do apologize, I did go to Kalamazoo to see the affordable housing go up. And I had all my notes ready to share with the council and walked off and forgot my book, but it was a wonderful experience to see that complex go up in Kalamazoo. One former Western, Western Michigan student, athlete, college student, football player, he, he. he spearheaded that whole project and got with some people with the city and was able to put a... I think Wendy, councilperson Wendy was with us. And she could share with you all some of the details. But I think affordable housing is needed in South Haven. We, we can't just rely on staff, the council to do it. I think we should try to put together ad hoc committee that would do a lot of the stuff that I'm doing is going out and trying to figure out some of the things that we could do to help the city get this project off the ground. I'm all about trying to be a part of the solution, not just complaining. And so it was an awesome building that they put up. Again, I think that the price range still might be a little high for certain areas. But they're putting up another unit across the street that's gonna meet the more of the low income. So when we say affordable housing, we're really saying workforce housing. That's what we're really saying. I think people get that mixed up with low income. But we're really saying workforce housing. South Haven need that. And again, too, it wouldn't hurt if we had low-income housing, another unit put up right here. It was really old. If we could put up another unit in the township, maybe. And so, you know, you're not gonna get low income in the city limit. That's just, it's not gonna happen. But if we can partner with the township and maybe put one out there, that would be nice too. And so I just wanted to say those couple of things and understand that. I know that the council have a lot in front of them. And I just really want to focus on getting more housing in South Haven. Workforce housing. And I would like to see maybe low-income housing too. Because I know some people say we have, we have enough. But I hear a lot of people complaining and they're in the low-income area. So we need to maybe consider putting up low-income housing as well in the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? If not, we'll move to city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I have a few items I wanted to update the council on. This Saturday, February 24th, here in this room, from noon to 2:00 P.M., we'll be having our seasonal job fair. Also, Shays will be represented there. Seasonal job fair will be looking at hiring people for parking enforcement attendants, beach attendants, parks and cemetery workers, bridge tenders. We're also looking for election workers. Megan may have a few of those going this week, this year. We also have more in customer service and dock hands. Shays will be recruiting for paid-on-call firefighters and also looking for folks to attend their cadet program. This is a place where if you want to bring your resume, that'd be great. Or you can fill out an application here. Why is this important? Because 23% of your full-time staff here at the city started off as a seasonal worker, including this person right here. As well as 77% of Shays, their paid-on, or their full-time personnel started off as their, their paid-on call. So these are really good ways to get involved in municipal government or the authority. Secondly, at the same day is the Warm Your Heart fundraiser for We Care. They're looking for people to come out and donate towards keeping the heat on for some folks in need here in town. I know that some of our elected officials will be attending there at the 2:00 P.M. hour. But there will be, it'll be a fundraiser going on all day. So that's here at the Welcome Island out here on Phoenix Street. Thirdly, Monday, this upcoming Monday, at 5:30, we will be having our Overton Housing Workshop. That starts at 5:30 P.M. at the Integrated Learning Center at the South Haven High School. The notice will be up, up on the city's website. I think it's on the calendar right now. So it starts at 5:30 P.M. We'll be having our consultant, Ryan Kilpatrick from Housing Next, kind of work through some, kind of the status of the housing with, in the city and in the state, as well as working through our options with Overton. And then lastly, I wanted to give an update on the ice rink. As we kind of fluctuate up into the high 40s and the 50s and there's sunny kind of forecast, the ability of the ice rink to kind of stay frozen is diminished. However, when we kind of dip that back down, it can be opened. Right now, weather-dependent, we're looking at keeping the ice rink open until the 4th of March. But again, it all depends on what kind of weather we're having. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Time for councilperson's comments. We'll start with Letitia.
First, I want to say thank you to all of you that came out tonight. I enjoyed everyone's comments. In regards to the celebration of Black History Month, I wanted to read this quick quote. Says, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Martin Luther King Jr. I also wanted to say that I was kind of waiting for the city manager or the mayor to kind of chime in. We did have an opportunity to visit one of the housing projects that went up in Benton Harbor called the Emma Hall Flats. And it was for workers, mainly for teachers and middle class. But they are also working on lower income in Benton Harbor. So, and the project that we saw was really, really nice. Kind of similar to what Mr. Wilkins saw in Kalamazoo, but the prices were a little lower. So I hope the mayor and the city manager chime in, you know, what they saw. I think Whirlpool was kind of instrumental in kind of pushing that forward. So I'm hoping that, I am pushing for housing. We need housing. My children can't afford to live here. The housing is just too, it's too expensive. And I hear, I heard the voices of a lot of people in the community, you know, saying, well, that's just the way it is. Well, it saddens me because I grew up here. I'm 54 years old. And it saddens me to think that my grandchildren will probably never live here and I won't be able to walk them to school. They both live in different cities where it is more affordable. And both of my children are professional. But a $400,000 home is just not affordable for them. And not only for them, but for a lot of my students that I see graduate from South Haven Public Schools. They are educated, but they cannot afford to come back to South Haven and live. And this is no disrespect to anyone who owns short-term rentals. I am not against short-term rentals. I just know that we need housing and we need housing fast. And it needs to happen. And I think that it's not gonna be a change until we all come together and come to some type of resolution. We have to stop closing our eyes and act like we don't see that we're losing residents in this city. Our numbers are down. Our student count is down. Our community is down. When I live in, on the south side of South Haven, there is not a lot of children anymore. Very rarely do I wake up on a Saturday and a sun, on a Saturday in the summer and hear children laughing and playing. I hear dogs, but I don't hear a lot of children laughing and playing anymore. And it makes me sad because when you think about hearing children, you think about life. You think about, you know, just families. It makes you excited. I mean, as, you know, as a middle-aged person, when you hear children, it does make you excited because I can't have any more children. But children, you know, they bring life to you. And we want to see families here in South Haven. And I think that we have to just come to a common ground and work together. I don't think anybody's just totally against the other person. But we have to be honest. We all live in this community and we all want what's best for this community. And those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to thank everyone that came and provided us comments. And thank you all those that are watching that weren't here in person. But I know there's people out there watching that. I appreciate that. And that's all my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Reeser.
I don't know if I heard it right tonight, but it sounded like from a few people that we can't bring jobs back here. And so why would we need more housing? If we take Ryan Kilpatrick, who's gonna give a housing seminar, he's already said publicly that between the township and the city, we're short 1,000 homes right now. If we're short 1,000 homes, that means the remaining homes are gonna go up in price because there's not enough homes. Anytime supply and demand, you don't have, you have a big demand and a low supply, prices go up. So I think something can be done. Secondly, someone said tonight that we need an economic development manager. I agree. I think this is a challenge for the state, for the country. And why would we think our city can, can have all the answers? And staff can't do everything. So I'd like to see an economic development manager. That would be the best money I think the city could spend. Tied in with that, when I ran for mayor, I talked to almost everybody in this town. And there was a lot of smart people in this town, a lot of great ideas. A couple of them are in this room right now that spoke up. Here's what I would like to suggest. I would be glad to help start, but not run, help start an ad hoc committee, as Bishop Wilkins said. Let's get some kind of a committee of residents started where they can start to formulate ideas. I know Trevor and I talked about it. I'll help facilitate, I'll help get it started. And then it can have a life of its own. But we gotta, we gotta work together. Have residents on one side, maybe an economic development manager, and bring it all together and do something. But we have to have, as Letitia said, we have to have workforce housing for those people, for both our current employers and future employers. And at the same time, try to find ways to get economic development, housing and jobs in this town. And I for one believe it can be done. And the last thing I want to say, please, let's not look at short-term rentals and neighborhoods as one or the other. I don't think, as Letitia said, we're not looking to bring short-term rentals completely down to zero, not even close. We can coexist with neighborhoods and short-term rentals. But we have two problems. One is, in my opinion, we have too many of them. And number two, they are in the wrong locations. And that has been part of the shift over the last 30 years. It's where the short-term rentals are. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Ms. Hosley.
Yes, thank you. And I apologize for being a little late. Thank you for your understanding. I fully agree about the need for a full-time economic development person. I campaigned on it. I do believe we need a go-to person who can help lift the load of the current staff. And I think that would help us because it seems like we're in a chicken or egg situation. We, we don't have employers coming here because they don't have a place to live. And people, so then there's no employers and people can't afford to live here because they don't have a job. So I fully support that. And I hope that something can come of that from our priority setting. Yes, I'm looking forward to the Island Sit this weekend. And I had an opportunity to meet with Erica and a few others. And one thing that I found out is the school is actually looking for school bus drivers, part-time, to help with homeless, transportation of homeless families to bring the childrens back. And so I thought I should have followed up to get the contact information. And I apologize, I didn't. But I do know that it's through the school. And so if you, you would have to have a chauffeur's license. But if you're interested in part-time, that could be very beneficial to the situation to help bridge the gap right now. With, in support of Black History Month, I know the Scott Club had a wonderful event, not quite two weeks ago. And they have another event tomorrow. It's at the Scott Club at 1:00 with regard to green cars for the Black History Travel. And it's open to the public. They also do Zoom. You can contact them through their website to get that Zoom link. Just, I think that is it for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Anuki.
As the bishop mentioned before, we had the opportunity to go out and see a great housing development that was going up in Kalamazoo. And it was just amazing to see. So thank you to Carrie for facilitating that. It was great to meet with the developer and just like see what he's doing and hear some ideas of things that we could do here. I believe that Kate is working on potentially meeting with him or just learning more about his business and what he brings to especially marginalized and underserved communities. So that could be a really good fit for us here. So yeah, that was a really great experience to see that firsthand. I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold.
Okay. Thanks to everyone that came and provided comments. We always appreciate all the good advice that we get. Mrs. Hu, I've been saying your name wrong for Hosley. Jessica Robinson is the H.R. Director at Green Street. I just called the administration building and they can get you in touch if you're interested in helping drive those kids around. Ms. McKeever, I'm glad you're here. You mentioned the bike lanes. Bike lanes, when they went in, it was kind of threefold. We wanted a bike path for kids to be able to ride their bikes. And I ride my bike down there. That was one goal. It was also a traffic calming measure. And then it was also to make it safe for pedestrians to cross the street. And it does serve those purposes. And you mentioned that light at Superior and Broadway. It was MDOT that took that down because that's part of the trunk line. And when we talked to them, we said, hey, you know, we really liked that. And they said that they would, they could, they could consider a traffic circle. And this is several years ago. And back then, we weren't really excited about traffic circles. But now we've got them at Maple Grove and we got them out here. And so maybe people are more aware of them and maybe we could look at that again. But like I say, the big thing was we want to make it safer for pedestrians. And I think that was your goal also, was safe crossing the streets. And you also mentioned that your mom was having some problems with the trash can. Please touch base with some of the city staff before you go or make sure we gave you your information because best way, we'll provide help for elderly citizens that can't get it out to the road and back. What else do we say? Oh, we delayed action on the houseboat motions, or all the activity on the houseboats. But Griffin sat here and kind of pleaded, so this message is for us. He kind of pled to us to give him some direction on what to do. And we didn't really do that. So we kind of dropped the ball. We need to get those directions so we can get moving on that. Mr. Brooks had a great comment. He said that we have a staff that's super busy and works really hard. He's correct. We have a super staff that works really hard and we really appreciate our staff. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. And thank you all for your patience over the last few meetings. As I've been stepping into my new role, I have made some missteps and I have apologized. Although mistakes have been made, we are all committed to moving forward by working together as a team to become a city council that you can all be proud of. Thank you. If there's no further business, we're adjourned.